Called order the Board of County Commissioners' work session for June 14th, 2016. Happy Flag Day, everybody. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute this flag of the state of New Mexico. The state has a little current president among the nine parties.
Whoa, Ron broke his chair. You wanted your one?
Yeah.
You have that one or that one?
City Council is tough on these things.
They are. Okay, first item on the agenda is to approve the work session agenda. Any changes need to come?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
And I'll take with that motion. Any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, second, five, stand aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, we will recess as the Grand County Board of Com- or I need a motion to recess through County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor, second, five, stand aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Called order the Grand County Canvassing Board. First item on that agenda is to approve or disapprove the 2016 primary election results.
Motion to approve.
It's a motion to approve the 2016 primary election results. Are there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, second, five, stand aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Can I get a motion to adjourn the Grand County Canvassing Board?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor, second, five, stand aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Called order the Grand County Board of Commissioners' work session. The purpose of this work session is for the county work session is to inform the Grand County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting and for the department heads to communicate with commissioners in regard to matters of their respective departments. In accordance with Grand County Resolution 1601, we will welcome the public to attend the county work session, but there will be no public input permitted at this meeting. So at this time, we will review the regular meeting agenda. Charlie?
This is Charlie Fisher-Hall. First items and minutes which are in your packets for your review. Moving on to financial reports. Item B, approved, disapproved, June 13th, 2016 expenditure report. Randy, would you go through the highlights of that, please?
Good morning. In your packet you have an expenditure report period ending June 13th, 2016, worth a sum of $3,800,238.33. Of that comes from accounts payable, $3,140,257.25 and three pay periods worth totaling To highlight some of the major expenses that we incurred within this time period, we had a check for $80,575. This was for a payment for a transit ambulance for the Hino Regional EMS Department and a payment to Engineers, Inc. for engineering services for the Forgotten Veterans Memorial and Rosial Road Monies project. A large payment to stove construction of $1 million, over $1 million for payment number seven and eight for the conference center remodel and the re-roof. New Mexico State University for the fourth quarter contribution for cooperative extension services. Kansas State Bank of $25,000 for another transit ambulance for Hino Regional EMS. Architecture workshop totaling almost $14,000 for architectural services for the Tucaosa project and the manager's office renovations. And New Mexico Human Services Department for $83,000 for the fourth quarter contribution for the safety net capital. I'll take, any questions if you have them?
I have no questions either, thank you.
Moving on to new business. Item C, approved, disapproved proclamation recognizing the 2016 New Mexico 4H Shooting Sports Contest High Point Hunting Team. Proclamation is in your packet. And Mr. Ramos will not be here.
Okay.
Item D, approved, disapproved proclamation recognizing the 2016 Silver High School State Champions for wrestling. Item E, approved, disapproved proclamation recognizing the 2016 Silver High School Softball Item F, approved, disapproved proclamation recognizing the 2016 Silver High School Girls' Golf Team. Lots of successful young men and women. Moving on to contracts and agreements. Item G, approved, disapproved agreement A 16-17, agreement between Aging and Long-Term Services and Grand County Senior Programs to renovate and equip the Silver City Senior Center. This is in the amount of $72,500 and this is to remodel the kitchen, which needs electrical upgrades, plumbing upgrades, as well as new equipment.
Which one?
The Silver Center.
And so, part of that is the equipment and do you know what?
Electrical and plumbing.
Electrical?
Electrical and plumbing.
Okay. But no, they're not going to be purchasing any specific equipment that you're aware of or?
I don't know what the specific list is. It just says various pieces of equipment, probably stove, hood, warmers. Randy, do you know exactly what they're purchasing?
Yeah, there's, I think it's going to be arranged. There's also going to be some, I think, upgrade to the restrooms and then the electrical and all that. Just depends on how far the money was fetched, but.
How old is that building now?
That's what we're trying to figure. I think it was built in 85, but I'm not, we've been trying to research that now. I think it was 85, the initial building.
The time to start, yeah.
Yes, sir. I know that there's been discussion about some stucco and stuff like that, but we'll see as far as how far the money will go, but definitely if the kitchen will be upgraded with electricity and new equipment.
Good. Thank you.
Next item, H, approved, disapproved agreement A-16-18, agreement with Kubel Group for maintenance at the detention center. What this is, for maintenance of the control system. We don't have a current maintenance system in place and so when the controls or the door controls or the intercom goes down, then we're paying an astronomical amount of money for a technician to come out and fix it. So we have looked into various different proposals. What we're recommending is a bi-monthly visits for an annual cost of $29,800 and that's been included in the budget. But that's a safety issue that we can't continue to just wait until it breaks.
That's comparable to what we're now paying for because we wait until it happens to get it taken care of and so that's comparable to that?
Yes.
I see Mike.
Any questions on that?
No.
Item I, approved, disapproved agreement A-16-19, agreement with the County of Santa Fe for inmate confinement. This is a renewal of an existing contract and the cost per day is $95 for adult inmates.
What other counties do we have contracts with?
We have contracts with Luna County, Doniana County.
Doniana County.
Santa Fe.
And also juveniles in Doniana and Luna when space is available. And the costs is comparable? They're all about the same?
Roughly, anywhere from $25.
Did you need to send some of the juveniles over to these comparative states for a while? Over the eastern part of the state?
We did have some, well, McKinley County and then we did have some that were going. I don't know those facilities. Usually what happens is whenever a juvenile is sent to the facilities, we don't, they try and locate the nearest facility possible and if they can't hold them, they just search around until they can find a juvenile facility that'll take them. But we did, yes, sir, we did have some going to the eastern part of the state.
Are we still using Luna for some juveniles?
Luna County has pretty much stopped taking juveniles. So we're, it's very limited right now around the state about, you know, what facilities.
A lot are just oppressive on how to deal with it, so.
Luna County was down to about four beds. If they have space available, they'll hold them for short-term holds, which is 96 hours or less. Doniana, our agreement is for short-term holds. If they have longer, and they have space, they will keep them longer, but majority of them are going to McKinley County.
And Luna County, aren't they increasing their facility or doing something?
I've heard rumors that they are, but.
Yeah, it was in the news media that they were doing some kind of.
But I've heard that they're increasing juveniles and then I heard it was only adults.
Really?
But they have a new county manager now.
Do they have a new one?
They hired Ira Pearson, I think. Guy was running the state. Any more questions on that?
No.
Item J, approved, disapproved agreement A-16-20, agreement between the State of New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration Local Government Division and Grand County for the local driving while intoxicated LDWI, DWI grant program. This is the annual grant for the programs that Cindy McLean runs and the award this year is $98,000. Item K, approved, disapproved agreement A-16-21, agreement with United States Department of Agricultural, Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service Wildlife Services for Work and Financial Plan for July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017. This is what we call AFIS and they do predator control for farmers, ranchers. This was included in the budget, there's no increase and the grant, or the contract is for $23,000.
Any questions?
No increase. Item L, approved, disapproved agreement A-16-22, agreement between Grand County DWI Program and Chris Helgert for Recovery Management Center. This is for the outpatient treatment component of our DWI program and the contract is not to exceed the amount of $45,000.
We had one with their last year's agreement.
Yes.
Now they pass to pay something, the clients too, don't they?
They pay a $5 copay each client.
What do they do if the client cannot provide a $5 copay? Is there?
I think they probably just waive it, don't they? I mean, they have to comply with that program. What if they don't have the $5 copay? That's a good question.
But yeah, there's a way there for them that can't afford it, but I think it's not really that bad. I think most people are.
Most people come up with it?
I never, when I was on the bench, I never remember. It could have happened, but I don't remember that ever happening.
It's never.
They just give up their six pack and.
Should it cost more now, Rob?
It's like $70. Any other comments, questions, we move on. Item M, approved, disapproved agreement A-16-23, agreement between Grand County DWI Program and Arlene Hogland for Professional Services Contract. This is for the assessments for the DWI program and this contract will not exceed $15,000. And had a similar contract with her in the past. Item M, and sorry, approved, disapproved agreement A-16-24, memorandum of understanding between Grand County DWI Program and the Silver City Police Department for Grant Number And this is for the Silver City PD to provide saturation controls, DWI enforcement activities and leave for, not to exceed $15,000. Similar contract as last year.
And this comes from the DWI money, right?
Yes, all part of the DWI agreement.
Okay.
Item O, approved, disapproved agreement A-16-25. This is in addition to the agenda. This is First Amendment to Professional Services Agreement for Tracy Gonzalez. We are increasing the total amount from $20,000 to $40,000 and this is a result of the $20,000 award we received from DFA for Behavioral Health Services for inmates. So it will be, allow us to expand on our inmate support program. So we are increasing her contract to reflect that grant award. Questions?
Nope.
Item P, approved, disapproved agreement A-16-26, First Amendment to Agreement A-15-22 between Grand County and High Desert Humane Society, which is in addition to the agenda. This is a renewal of the existing agreement. There, she has requested a slight increase in the amount of $2,800 and it's, she's not, she's not had any increase in many, many years and $2,800.
Did you identify the increase, what they're going to use it on?
I think it's just the cost of doing business. She hasn't had an increase in, I think, six years.
Six years. Nothing's gone up since then, huh?
No.
Yeah, so long.
$2,800 in the budget is. Next item, Q, approved, disapproved agreement A-16-27, Amendment to Agreement for Funds Paid Through the Restorative Justice for Robert Torres. These are the programs that Bianca runs and this amendment will decrease the contact in the amount of $700.
That's all, it's good. We're doing a good job, we really are.
Yes, we are. Item, Item R, approved, disapproved agreement A-16-28, Amendment to Agreement for Funds Paid Through Restorative Justice for Laura Ramnerat. I always miss her name, Ramneri.
Yeah, you should.
This amendment is to increase the contact amount by $1,649. This is also part of Bianca's programs. Next item, S, approved, disapproved agreement A-16-29, Amendment to Existing Contract for Chris Helgert Otherwise Doing Business As the Recovery Management Center to Reflect $11,000 Increase. This was an increase that Cindy received in the current fiscal year budget and she failed to do this amendment to Ms. Helgert's contract to reflect the increase in those services. So that's just to point that out. Any questions on those? Next item, bids, item T, approved, disapproved bid B-15-14 for the Forgotten Veterans Memorial We bid this with a base bid and then there were five additive alternates. We're only able to award the base bid, the low, the low, apparent low bidder, Sakatoon Construction, in the amount of $170,800, no, 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 $95,456 and that's without GRT. They only had $125,000 grant and that's to include construction as well as the professional services. The county has helped them out with some of the professional services, so they were able to construct just, basically they're just going to get the metal buildings, they're not going to get the septic. They wanted.
Show me where you got those numbers.
Okay. Here's the base bid down here. So total bid was.
Eighty.
Was all of this.
$170.
But we can't afford all of it. So the additives were septic and wetlands, concrete aprons, electric overhead door opener, windows, heating and cooling, wet politicians and plumbing for bathrooms and those alternates for, that Sakatoon bid was $170,851 and that's not possible with a total award of $125,000. So it's our recommendation that we only award the base bid of $95,456 for the building. Any questions? Any more questions? Next is resolutions. Item U, approved, disapproved resolution R-16-21, fiscal year 2015-16 budget adjustments. Randy, would you go through that, please?
To begin with the Public Works Department, the director has requested a $5,200 transfer from his fee-in item to $5,000 for supplies and tools and $200 for training. The Sheriff's Office has requested numerous transfers from different funds such as mileage per diem, from courthouse security contracts, training, uniforms and vests and clothing allowance and to disperse certain amounts into pre-employment, operating expenses, capital outlay and ammunition. The Road Department has requested a transfer from tires of, for $5,000 into the Road Department Fleet and Maintenance Repair. And others, we have some amounts, an amount of $95,000 for an expenditure increase for a carryover, transfer for the Cliff Hill voluntary fire department, an amount of $2,000 in increased revenue and a match of $2,000 for total increase in expenditures of 22 for a Tyrone grant for, from the EMNRD. We also have a $2,500 increase in revenue with a $2,000, $2,500 match for a total expenditure increase of $5,000 for the 2016 tourism grant. We have a $1,000 revenue increase and a $1,000 cash match, so for a total of $2,000 expenditures for a per diem grant for the emergency management. We also have a $2,600 expenditure increase for a fund reversion, decrease, I'm sorry, for a fund reversion that needs to go back to the Department of Health that was denied for a carryover. We also have a revenue increase of $6200, that is for a general obligation bond allocation for the Hino Library. We also have a $5,889 revenue increase and decrease for the AWAS upgrade grant. We also have a temporary cash match of $654. We have a revenue increase of $42,568 revenue and expenditure increase, that is for an airport action development plan. We have a $4,865 revenue increase, revenue and expenditures for a 2016 transportation grant total, that is a funded increase. Funding decrease for 2016 congregant meals for the senior programs and 2016 home delivery total for an amount of $17,910 and $2,890. County Capital Projects total, a expenditure decrease of $6,760 and the Road Department Facility Roof Repair total expenditure increase of $6,760. Capital Projects Construction, oh, there's nothing on that, and a revenue increase of $512,430 for the Santa Rita Fire Substation total. Should be all laid out there in resolution form if you have any questions. That was it. Thank you.
That concludes the, going through the, the agenda, so we'll start.
County reports.
What's that?
Just to.
Yeah, just to reports. So we'll go ahead and do county reports and we'll start, we don't have the hospital today, so we'll do Mike.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall, I report for the reporting period of May 6th to June 10th. Item number one, that item remains to stay in continuation. Item number two, the Grand County Detention Facility is currently fully staffed. We still have the promotional opportunity for one proper physician. Testing for this physician will be scheduled later this month, probably in the next couple of weeks. We did have Ergonomics come in, the company that we had purchased a time clock. It has been installed at the facility and also we have Officer Martinez who's been working on the showers in the facility in the back of the cells, sealing those up and painting them over and getting them ready. We've been having some issues there, so he's had quite a years of experience as a painter and he agreed to do this, do this job for us, so we thank him for that. Item number three, the assessment remains the same. Item number four, our training, we've been conducting in-house training currently, being conducted for all the officers. The training areas are report writing, youth support and special management. Training is also being conducted by our Training Sergeant, Bellindo. Training for the Detention Administrator Sergeants and all employees is being conducted by the one-day pay HR. They are the vendor who installed the time clock. And once the 6th, 8th of 2016, Department of Safety conducted fingerprint training for our supervisors, this training is in conjunction with DPS, replacing the software and updates on our LifeScan fingerprint machine that we've had in the facility. That machine has been down for quite some time simply because it's been old and they haven't been able to replace any of the parts and they finally came down and installed some new software and stuff, so we're going to be doing that and we had to train the officers on our, on the LifeScan machine and get it going and it is up and going now. Item number five on our inmate support, just an update, I've been asked by the Subcommittee to look into a crisis intervention team for the area. I've been in contact with Los Cruces Police Department, the sergeant down there, they'll be giving me some information, so hopefully we can put that together and also Commissioner Hall, maybe that may be able to work for us also with the Tucaosa Detox Center also. Item number six, we're awaiting nominations for the Employee of the Month. Item number seven, our detention statistics, the average daily population for the month of May to June was 59, seven more than last month. High population males was 61, 11 more than last month. High population females was 13, three more than last month. Currently for June 10th, 2016, there were 68 inmates booked in the facility. June 12th, 2015 and June 10th, 2016, the one-year snapshot, the average daily population confined in the facility was 65. The average length to stay for this reporting period is 39.1 days and I have the ARC and the CJ5 report if you have any questions on those. Okay, item number six, monthly agency arrest totals and all these statistics as compared to last month show an increase in activity. Item number eight, our monthly arrest.
You are concerned with or something that seems to be rising?
Um, well, you'll see in the rest of the statistics, it still has to do with a lot of the warrants, a lot of probation and parole violations. Those are a continuation. Those continue to be about the same, which is very high. One thing that we are having is number of individuals coming in with drug offenses.
Only we get paid for out of the probation and parole is just the parole, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's in state prisons.
Item number eight on our emergency agency, monthly agency total arrest, Silver City Police Department had 81, Grand County Sheriff's Department had 33, New Mexico State Police 15, Beard Police 9, Santa Clara 6, and Hurry Police had one and Western New Mexico University had five, so some of those different agencies, their arrest totals came up a little bit as compared to last month. Detention Facility conducted 32 district court transports, Division 1 magistrate court was 26, Division 2 magistrate court was 5, Silver City Municipal Court was 0, Santa Clara Municipal Court was 2 and Beard Municipal Court was 0. We conducted eight medical transports during this reporting period for a total of 73 transports this month as compared to 31 last month. And again, statistics indicate an activity, an increase in activity as compared to last month. Item number 10 on probation violations, we had 14 probation violations in the facility. That was four less than what we had last month. Probation violations, inmates awaiting sentencing during this period are five, there's three more than last month. Total inmates charged with warrants, 45, that's 10 more than last month. And total number of special management inmates during this reporting period on 16th of 2016 was 14, which is six more than last month. My report, sir.
Mike, what kind of delay, I'm sorry, Mike, what kind of delay are we? Mike, what kind of delay, I'm sorry, Mike, what kind of delay are we seeing? Because one of the things that we get paid for in the state too is from the time they're sentenced by the district court to which time they're transported. What kind of, have you ever looked at that and seen how much time? Is it excessive or anything?
There is, Commissioner Hall, usually it depends on the court system and when they give us the transport, whenever they go ahead and do the transports.
How do you deal with this report? As far as that's concerned, as far as being reimbursed?
Yes, sir. You know.
Could you get that to me?
I can get that.
Kind of look at it and see if it's coming up or down, is it?
Yes, sir.
You know, we need to continue to communicate maybe with the courts and let them know that this is a cost and if we could speed it up and, and, of course, they're transported by the Sheriff's Office.
Yeah. And I know the sheriffs, they've been, they've been shorthanded, so it is, it could, it can be lengthy at some times, but I will get, I'll get that average.
This is variables too, but I know sometimes the sheriff will wait till another one is sentenced to take two up rather than just telling one, come back and do it, do it again. But, so I realize there's some variables, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
I'll get that for you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mike. Harold?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We finished Chipstone and the road that we had ready to go yesterday. We still have four or five days worth of Chipstone to do, and I think I'm going to wait until we get that new chip spread around. The old one we had hasn't put trouble with the last three, four days. The hot plan is backups, we're back patching the roads that we still need to get patched for the Chipstone project. Other than that, it's pretty much business as usual. I did have that pre-con with the contractor for Rosedale Road, but it looks like their schedule starts July 11th over there on that project. Trouble again.
Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just real quick, Public Works, just control the weeds, that's our biggest issue right now. Also keeping all facilities cool. We've had some issues with some of the air conditioning's going out and it just takes a while. That's not a part you can just get off the shelf, so let's take it as well and get someone who's gone and continue to look at that. Corrida Caminos, we got through the Blues Fest in Romeo pretty good, but no major issues with that. We did get a new bus, so we're just waiting on all the assignments and everything to put on the bus. Airport, selling a lot of fuel right now. Forest Services is probably besides O.T., is our main source. There are some contract jobs out there. We had a Shima helicopter that was firing about 800 gallons every time they needed fuel. They bring their own fuel truck in when they're on the fire, that way they can continue to fuel. But once they land, they're sitting there and they're buying fuel from the families as soon as they can. Also, the spotter planes and some of the recon planes, they're buying a lot of fuel from us. They also have a more smaller Type 6 helicopter that goes out, they've got a trailer that they take with a tank on it and they can pursue people from them. So I hope that some numbers will be in July as we move forward to see what we've had, so we may have a word of that. AWAS has been a little bit running at the airport, that's been kind of a challenge for us, but just as we're pretty hard on that and trying to get that. The courthouse, the electrical will be done this Friday, it's going to be closed, the courthouse. They're going to finally tie into the panel and the new full premium. That will happen this Friday, June 7th, so hopefully that will be wrapped up and we'll get that. On the fireside, nothing in Grant County, major right now from the volunteer standpoint. We did have some human caused fires in Maine, but nothing major, which doesn't show burn. And we're to work with the Forest Service and State Forest to help control those. There are also fires in New Mexico, as people know, this could be a fire in Socorro County, Socorro that's in the west side, that's burned approximately 534 acres, but that is almost 80% contained as of this morning. The decayed fire is in the wilderness, mostly in Tatchan County. That is burned about 10,200 acres as of this morning. That is just being controlled, it's a control burn, nothing's being threatened, they're just managing that fire as well. The Turkey Fire is also in the wilderness, it's burned 1,800 acres. Nothing's being threatened to that, and they are just managing that fire as well. There is a fire in Lee County, the east side of the state, they're on fire, it's burned about 200 acres, but that's pretty much been scattered down. This burn fire is also here in the wilderness, of course, it burned 700 acres, that began on the 21st, but all of them considered lighting costs, and they're just managing that as well. Hopefully I'll get a COVID here from the Forest Service in July when there's another fire, whether it be April or April 1st, of course, yes, moving forward for the rest of this fire season. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, unless you have any questions.
Questions? Probably for the Forest Service, I just wondered about the fuel on the ground and the predicted weather and such as this, and how, how are we looking the rest of the fire season?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall, it just depends on what you've done. Grant County, as you know, we have a lot of moisture in certain areas. A lot of fires, if you look in the Tyrone District, not as much. The grass is high, it's drying out, we're not supposed to see moisture here for another 10 to 14 days, so it's going to dry pretty good. If you look in the, in the forest, they've had a lot of moisture over the last two weeks, so that's, that's looking pretty good for them. If you look around the east side of the county, which is whiskey, clear, for Bear and Santa Rita, the Newbury area, they are irrigating some moisture, so it looks pretty good for them. But again, in the next 10 to 14 days, it's pretty dry, it's a good dry, pretty good. But, you know, everybody's ready. Tyrone hasn't been as busy as the other departments in the Newbury area, but again, we've got the help of the Forest Service and the wilderness district as well to help us with those, so, you know, but I just have people be cautious. There's nothing major right now as far as any restrictions from either the Forest Service or State Forest, and that's usually what we take our leave from, that the governor's concerned a little bit as we are here with fireworks. But I just urge people to be cautious and make sure that they, there's no tracks burning, obviously that's illegal. So just keep, just keep your local fire districts informed of any type of outbreak.
Yeah, I agree. You know, a big part of this is, is our residents, our regiment in marching and what they do from grinding metal to fires, to burning grass or whatever, be very careful, it's just really dry out there. And I want to thank you because, you know, every time I have a question about that, I call you and you have, you're dying on the spot, and I appreciate what you're doing, and thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall, thank you.
Okay. Charlene, I'm going to give you an opportunity to introduce your news director.
Thank you. Honored to introduce our new Planning Director, Misha, or Michael Laddish. He started last Monday, he's hit the ground running, has already moved forward with several new ideas to bring that department, what we would consider into, hopefully, the 21st century. Anyways, we're very happy to have him, and I don't suspect that he has much of a report, so I'll turn the floor over to him anyway. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, Ed, Ed Manager, Commissioners, thank you. Yeah, I do not have much of a report right now. I just got started, like she said, last week, and just kind of getting a feel for the way that things are, and I look forward to giving you a report next month.
You know, you and I had a short conversation the other day and told you some interest that I had and such, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall, thank you.
Do you want to complete your, do you have any report?
Just a couple things. For the July meeting, we will combine the work session on the regular meeting on July 14th. I need to attend a Colonial's Board meeting to request.
So we only meet on July 14th?
Only on July 14th. The remodel in the Administration Office to construct the additional offices for the new Commissioners will begin on June 22nd. So far, everyone will have patience with the noise and dust. And also, all of the new AV equipment for this room has been delivered and then with CATS, we'll be scheduling installation of that with minimal disruption of county and city meetings, so excited to get that in here and it'll be a little more user friendly. No passing of the microphones and no more of the crowd having to move around the room to be able to see the screen. So looking forward to getting that accomplished. And I have nothing else, unless you have questions.
Any other questions? So I see Brian has appeared in the room. Brian, do you have a report today? Good morning.
We'll start with an update of Hila Regional's financials. And once again, these are as of end of April. I want to let the Commission know that finance is still a challenge. In rural hospitals all across America, you know, I just presented an article to our board last month that was just really an update talking about the fact that almost 70 hospitals have closed, rural hospitals, over the last couple of years. There's another 600 to 700 hospitals, rural hospitals, at risk for closure across the country. That's about a third of the rural hospitals in America. Another high percentage are just riding that break even. So it's as tight as it's ever been. We've been talking about this for a couple of years, and the same with our board. And so when we talk about the most challenging healthcare environment in modern history, especially in rural America, and in our state, as you know what they're doing with Medicaid, decreasing Medicaid dollars, safety net care pool dollars. We used to get $15 million a year from the state, we're down to $4 million now. So we've had to absorb that $11 million difference, and for the most part, we have. But the challenges continue to come. And in this particular year, we've been talking all year about this rebuilding year for Hila Regional. This electronic health record that we've been talking about, we're finally getting closer and closer. Looks like we had a July go live, that we're pushing it back just a little bit more to September. We have just one more significant issue that we want to make sure that creates a safe patient care environment for us. We have these huge projects. We are re-engineering our entire revenue cycle, so we're investing a lot of dollars in additional contract dollars to help us re-establish our foundation. And given that, in the month of April, we posted a negative $500,000 bottom line. So as of end of April, end of year, or excuse me, year-to-date, we're at $1.8 million loss. Now, our cash is still good, we're sitting at about 130 days of cash, but it just continues to exemplify the challenges that we face. We're in constant communication with our board about our strategic approach to this, and that really this represents this rebuilding year, but we're getting hit really hard this year. Our expectation are, is that on the other side of this fiscal year, once we get done the Meditech project and the revenue cycle project, that we'll start to approach that break even again, we'll be one of those hospitals that ride that break even. So the challenges continue to come. I'll be speaking to the Commissioners in the near future and County Manager about some other kind of strategic initiatives that we'd like your consideration and support with as another piece of the puzzle to maintain a viable, you know, vibrant, growing healthcare organization for our community. The healthcare that we deliver obviously is key to our community, the economic benefit to our community, we're very aware of all those components. But in summary, I just wanted to continue to echo that we're in a serious challenge. We're one of the hospitals that are getting impacted across the nation, and we're working non-stop to maintain high-quality services for our community. As far as physician recruiting, we're still, we had a physician that we had recruited to take Dr. Sparks's place, if she retires out in August, that fell through, so we continue our recruiting around an ENT doctor for that replacement. We're still looking for pediatricians to support our community. We continue to evaluate the construction project in our labor and delivery area and our OR recovery space, and we're still evaluating that, getting further architectural recommendations, and we'll be making a decision as a board how we're going to move forward with that, and of course, we'll be communicating that to the Commission. That's all I have for my report today, and I would stand for questions.
You got some movement in your board, I understand, and some real leadership that's going to be leaving with Mr. Kelly, and he's going to be missed, and I just want to let the public know that that's open now and that we'd sure like people to consider July the 6th, deadline of July the 6th, and like for people to get involved, a very, very important position within this community. And it's going to be hard to feel Charlie's shoes, but it's something you have to do and stuff. And I don't remember which program it is, but it's where you're moving some of the physicians into the hospital or through the hospital and such. How's that going? Is that being successful? You understand what I'm talking about?
As far as our physician practice network?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, our physician practice network continues to grow. We're moving people around in buildings, you know, we're running out of space, and we've updated our electronic health record there. That's caused a little bit of challenge with our physician practices, but we're up to about seven physicians that are employed by Hila Regional, and more continue to come. That's another challenge for us financially, to put up the capital to start a physician practice, but that's the wave of now, not the future. The present is physicians are coming to the hospital and requiring to be employed now, whereas in the past, they were independent. You know, there's a lot of benefit to that, but there's also some cost down there for that.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate you, Commissioner Hall, bringing up, we have a couple replacements, one member and also a physician member of our board. Dr. Steiner is also leading the board, we can't thank them enough. Charles and Dr. Steiner, they pulled us through the most challenging time in leadership in Hila Regional history with the situation that we faced three years ago with the Commissioner's support. It doesn't get any tougher than that, and Charles, Dr. Steiner have helped provide the leadership necessary to move through that most challenging of times. Can't thank them enough.
So in the past, one of the things we talked about, now I don't remember if it was a year ago, if it was 18 months ago, we talked about collections. Can you go through how collections have changed in the last 18 months?
Yes.
Better, worse?
Yes, we're much better, but we're still in the middle of that project. You're correct, we had a long evaluation and assessment project looking at our business office. That's the back end of our revenue cycle. That's where the money gets collected. There's a lot of work that needs to be, to happen upfront to make sure that that process is as smooth as possible. And we had some people, right, some of our employees were in fear and maybe approaching some of the Commissioners, we're going to lose our jobs. Obviously, that was not our decision. Our decision was to in-source, bring in additional temporary expertise to help clean up our revenue cycle. That's what we've been involved in for the last probably six months heavily, and it's a big system to re-engineer. We're still in the middle of it, but we're already seeing, you know, one example is, we used to bill all of our claims by hand, and in healthcare, that is just ridiculously complex. Do all that by hand, and then after we got a bill, then the billers would then work on collections. Well, as of the first of this past month, we've implemented an electronic billing system, which is, you know, what most hospitals utilize. Now we can put more effort into the collection process, so now we're automating our processes to clean that up. So we're still in the middle of it, we're not, we're not through that yet, but a lot of effort's gone into that, and we're starting to get some of the benefit of that effort and maintaining our local employees in our business office in this case.
With that being said, would you say that you're collecting a higher percentage now of what you bill than you were, or?
Yes, and I can't give that percentage. The amounts of collections are typically higher. This past month, we actually hit a month where it was a little bit lower as we were implementing this new system. So we're still getting some variability, but overall, our collections have increased, and of course, our percentage of collections has increased, yes.
Because it seems to me like there's got to be a hole somewhere. We're missing, are we missing a hole someplace?
Definitely. We're leaving money on the table, so that's just the collection part, we're talking about the back end. Where we're leaving money on the table still is on the front end and the middle part of the process, to make sure that people have the right prescription when they walk in the door from the physician, the right authorization. If that doesn't happen... If that doesn't happen, when it gets on the back end, we'll get a denial, and we'll lose that payment or part of that payment. So we still have holes throughout the system, making sure the documentation is tight, the coding is tight, they don't make it easy to collect a dollar, you know? So we have, this process is looking at the whole system, and it's so big and so complex, but we're right in the middle of it now, and starting to see some of the results of those efforts.
I've been on the board for as many years as I was, I see exactly what you're talking about, when you start with the coding and you go through all that, and something being miscoded, at the end, you don't get paid at all. So strategically, that's one of, one of the things that you're really trying to streamline and work on, to make sure that you get all that done at the beginning, so you can get all that money at the end, okay?
That's one of the reasons we brought in additional outside resources, because we didn't have enough people to be able to do it, such a big project. We have some outside resources, contract, temporary resources to help us, and that's what's also, you know, incurring that additional cost. But they're time limited, they won't be there forever. As we get done pieces of this project, people drop off out of that project, and eventually they'll, they'll all be gone, and we'll be maintaining that process. So the other challenge is the rules change every three months. This code is now a different code, and so it's a moving target.
And it's probably a different code for every, every, or not provider, but every insurance company and?
For every insurance company.
That creates no job for someone, right?
It's a couple FTEs just to manage, just to manage.
So let's talk about nursing a little bit, are you still hiring a ton of travelers?
Yes, definitely. And this is across the nation, not unique to Silver City. I got to tell you, the CNO, Peggy White and her team, they have some great plans already implemented, and already starting to pay some dividends. They've developed programs, an internship program where they bring in people, nurses, new nurses, and train them, get them up to speed much faster, so that they can move to specialty areas like special care unit and matron delivery and ER. And we also have a very close partnership, obviously, with Western New Mexico to bring in high-quality nurses, new grads, but that's, that's an ongoing fight, and it's across the country, and there's a bidding war going on across the state and the country, so a significant challenge.
How many graduates is Western putting out? Do you have any idea?
You know, they're in the teens to twenties, so usually range is 15 to 20, somewhere in that range.
And I can ask Dr. Shepherd, but if you know, I'll ask you anyway. Do you know if they could expand that program?
I'd have to ask him that specifically. I'm not sure if the limit on the number is because of their instructors or some structural issue, or the number of applicants coming in.
Because it seems to me like we could use about double that many coming out every year.
Every year. You know what, I'll follow up on that question and see, you know, what's the limiting factor in that.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I had.
Appreciate the time.
Hey Brian, thanks for coming down and giving us the, yeah, the hospital's a huge deal.
Appreciate it, and if I could, we get that, we take it really serious. And if I could just add one more comment to Commissioner Hall, you had a dialogue the other day, we're just continuing to be really excited about the Tucasa project, and boy, there's a lot of work, and it's finally coming to fruition, and it's going to be a great benefit to the community, and Hill Regional is trying to gear up to see how we can support that, especially around the medical detox area, and we're looking forward to supporting that project.
And you all know that when we first started, we were going 40 directions, and then we asked for your assistance, and you had a planner come in, and just made a world of difference to hone us in on what direction to go and when to go another direction then. So thank you very much.
Yeah, Ms. Ashley Garcia did.
Yes, she is, she's outstanding, and congratulations to her, a new mom.
We'll do, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, the elected officials will give their reports on Thursdays now, so in that, unless anybody has anything else they want to say, we take the motion to adjourn.
So will.
Second, I'll raise a favor, 65 saying aye.
Aye.